Alright, so welcome to the March 7th meeting of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board. The Chair Greg Strange is absent today, so I'll be serving as the Vice Chair hosting the meeting. In a mass, our ultimate member will be serving as a full voting member. And so, in keeping with an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, as amended by Governor Baker on February 12th, 2022, the meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board commission members will be remote and remote attendance shall count towards quorum. Meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. We'll do a roll call. Peter Duchesne here.
Chris Anderson here.
Robert Stetson here.
Val Sarahk here.
The first order of business is a continued public hearing for 20 South Street Roach Commons, which I believe might be continued.
Yes, they have requested a continuance to the March 21st meeting, so they can respond to the comments from Beta.
Motion to continue 20 South Street special permit till the 21st.
Benham Second.
Any further discussion or any hands raised?
Don't see any.
All in favor, Duchesne I.
And Anderson I.
Val Sarahk I.
Stetson recuses.
Motion passes.
And Mr. Vice Chair, if I could just mention that the report from Beta has been uploaded to permidize. After I reviewed it after meeting last Monday, I asked them to format it so that their response, their comments were in response to the comment and response from the applicant engineer. And that makes it easier for people to read and see what the initial questions were and then what the subsequent comments and responses were.
Okay, great, thank you. If the applicant needs to revise the plan, hopefully we and, you know, maybe the Planning Department and the neighbors have a chance to, a couple of days to look at that before
Yes.
the 21st. Okay, next we have internally illuminated sign for 20 Roach Brothers Way Bay State Eye Center.
And I believe we have David Quinn here for that.
David, just please introduce yourself for the record. After you unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. I have a new laptop. I'm David Quinn. I'm the owner of Signs By Tomorrow in Norton, Massachusetts.
Hello, if you want to just, Stephanie, do you want to bring up the?
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yep.
So are these channel letters? Oh, and then the gray is just sort of a backdrop?
Yes, it's, there's a currently another sign come, I'm sorry, another eye center facility there. We're going to be taking those letters down and then putting that darker gray panel to essentially hide all the disturbed area on the facade and then put the individual channel letters over that die bond panel.
Okay, and is the
Danger ownership.
Is the eye channel eye?
Correct, yes. It's just like that current one, yes.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I had a question. Is the, so is it painted ephesus right now? Is that what the darker color is?
The real dark color right behind the letters would be a aluminum panel. We use dye bond. It's a aluminum faced with a plastic core. And then the ephesus is the reddish color behind there. That's, you can see it better in the photo.
Right, right. So the existing is like a painted ephesus and you're coloring with the panel.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Are any of the other existing backgrounds, are they all still the ephesus? Or has anyone else replaced the background? And I know it's kind of like an insert, isn't it, in the, if I remember correctly, that shape? Is it like slightly? Okay.
Yes, it's recessed. I am not aware of the other signs in that plaza. This is actually Bay State Eye has location in Anfield, Plymouth and oh, one other one, I forget where, Bridgewater. And this is actually their logo. They have the darker gray background with the silver letters. And it just worked out that we're able to cover the same, the old letters would be coming down.
Okay. I mean, I think it probably is going to actually look better, as you said, it's going to help conceal, you know, whatever was there previously, because it's kind of hard to touch up ephesus. At the same time, in terms of the shopping center in general, I don't know if that's setting a precedent that, you know, some of the other backdrops maybe could become part of the signage. So I don't know if that's good or bad. I'm just kind of, you know, stating that out loud, so, but I think, I think it's good.
I did factor that in the square footage is the entire background panel and the letters for the requirements.
And Stephanie, we're all set there in terms of that, okay. Yeah, then I don't have an objection, so it's basically, we're just going to consider the whole area of the sign.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions or potential motions?
Make a motion to approve the sign.
Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, Duchesne I.
Stetson I.
Anderson I.
Benham I.
Val Sarahk I.
Motion passes. Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night.
So next we have proposed zoning amendments board discussion for the 2022 town meeting coming up quickly. So Stephanie, we're discussing tonight and then for the next meeting it would be a public hearing?
Yes.
And then how many, how many more meetings do we have before we need to, we need to vote to recommend items for the town meeting?
Probably one, let's see, one meeting after the if the board doesn't vote on the 21st.
Eric, can I just say something for one minute? This is, so we voted on the top, top list of zoning amendments to have a public hearing on the 21st. But the, well, two, we need to vote tonight. The board needs to vote tonight to hold.
Yeah, I was going to mention that when we got to those.
Okay, so that'll be a different.
Alright, so we should do a good amount of work on these so that they're very close to being voted in front of the next meeting.
Right.
Okay, well, let's get started. Thank you for putting them all into the proposed amendments sheet. That was very handy.
Okay, um, let me do this. There we go. Alright, do you want me to share my screen as we go through these?
Yes, please.
That'd probably be a lot easier. Sorry, I've got something on my screen that I need to do. Okay, can everybody see that? And I will zoom in a little more.
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay, so would it help if I walked through this for everyone?
Yeah, let's see. So I mean, I think self-storage, yeah, we went over it quickly last time, right? And I don't think we've got any more questions or comments. Just review it, make sure it's right.
The only question I had with self-storage was, are we allowing it ever? Like, not even for a short period of time?
So this is not onsite, this is not personal onsite storage, Chris? If that's what your question is related to, this is allowing self-storage units. So you can see I've added a definition, which I don't think we had last meeting.
Yep.
Which is building or buildings consisting of individual self-contained units no larger than 400 feet each that are leased. So this would be rented space, multiple units for storage for rental by people for personal, household or small business storage.
Got it, sorry.
Yep.
For correcting me.
And so
This is a self-storage business.
Right, correct. It's business.
Maybe, maybe, maybe you should say that, no?
Well, everyone refers to it as self-storage. We did, I did some research and got information from others, so and we have the definition.
Okay. It would have more clear if it says that this is a business of self-storage.
Stephanie, where did you come up with that definition?
I solicited planners on the listserv to see what people used and this was pretty common. I think, you know, I kind of took a couple of pieces from some. Some didn't specifically state that storage of hazardous materials, the substances shouldn't be allowed, but that's something we really wouldn't want. And the no other activity, some of the other definitions that were, again, very, very similar to the definition of a building or building containing the individual self-contained units no larger than 400 feet each. And that should, should be square feet.
Yeah, I was going to say that, but I'm just wondering if, if we're restricting ourselves by being that detailed? That's the one question that kind of jumped out at me after having reviewed it. And I, I recognize what was the point is, is that the traditional self-storage, that, that that probably makes some sense, but I know that in the context of this discussion, it came up that, you know, what we had in mind anyway was sort of more modern ideas of, of self-storage, you know, that might be attractive in areas that I think at first blush, we'd probably say, no, we don't want self-storage there. But because it's, it's done in a slightly different way. So I guess I'm just wondering if we're being maybe a little too restrictive in the definition. That's it's just, and it's not a command by any stretch.
So what, what?
I, I, I would, I would more define as the service it is that is renting space for people to put stuff. But of course, you need to say that in a different way, but it can be a second floor on a commercial area that there's space there as someone rented for, you know, for, for space.
Right, so I, I guess that's my question for, for Rob, Bob, is, and I'm not, I'm not questioning this, like, how can you interpret it that way? But what parts of it do you find restrictive? So we know kind of how to.
I think probably the square footage is, is the, is the biggest one. I'm, I'm thinking through the individual self-contained units to see whether or not that's too restrictive. But I do think that the square footage reference is probably too restrictive or more restrictive than at least I thought we were talking about. But, you know, those are just my thoughts.
Though I have never rented one of these, well, not true. My husband went to, rented one years ago, many, many years ago. And I probably visited it once. I mean, I've certainly been by these type of storage units. What, I mean, how large would you think it would need to be? Or does it, does it not matter? Are you thinking that it doesn't need a limit? Because
I'm not sure. And I, I guess what I, the other piece that, that I tried to get my head around is just the idea of self-contained units. I mean, are, are there other types of self-storage businesses out there that, you know, you know, could, would fall through the cracks based on this, this definition?
So I think the idea of self-contained is that each, there's an individual unit that is provided for a client. Now, a client could probably, if they want to create more space than what a single unit would hold, they could probably contract for multiple units.
Why didn't you say that? Then, as a definition.
Say what?
What is the objective and what, what this is used for, more than giving dimensions? What, what do you need the dimensions at all?
If the board doesn't want it, again, this is, this is suggested for discussion.
Yeah, but you put it there because of some reason, right?
Well, again, I solicited input from other communities and many of them had, in, in fact, 400 square foot was the the maximum amount, but they did not, they didn't all have a limitation.
Yeah, that's, you know, 20 by, you know, that's a pretty big storage area as far as my understanding of the common self-storage units.
Oh, yeah.
But whether
Depending on the use of the self-storage, like, I'm thinking of like other companies that may use like, like Iron Mountain, where you send all your documents someplace to be stored. It's not
Yeah, that does a warehouse, I think.
Right, because they're, they're storing so many records and, and that's for larger businesses.
So
Kind of the reason
Start like a carpet business and I have 20 rolls of, you know, big rolls of carpet, they're giant, you know, that would, that just seems a little different.
I don't think
Yeah.
I think we were always talking about personal. Now, in, in Amos, maybe that's the distinction you want to make is calling it personal self-storage. To me, when I hear that, I feel like it means self-storage on my property, but
I would agree, Stephanie, and it looks like most of the words that you have there are consistent with the build, the commercial building code definition of storage. And a building like this, if it was self-storage, would be classified as storage. And yes, it was a much larger facility that was storing something that's not like self-storage, then that would be a warehouse. And so the building code doesn't differentiate in terms, or doesn't specify in terms of square footage. Although there is the wording on there about storage in relationship to the rest of the building, whether it's considered accessory storage, which is not the same as our accessory storage. But I think it's, I think you're right. I think at least for like planning purposes and building official purposes for the purposes of our board interpreting this. I think it's clear that this is not for like the type of storage you have in your yard or that's private. This is, we're talking about commercial.
Yeah, so the, the closest thousand square foot unit in the area from what I just found online is in Lakeville. So every other one is, you know, 10 by 10, 10 by 20, 5 by 5.
Yeah, I was going to say 400 feet, square feet is larger than the room I'm in right now and that would be a lot of space.
So if, if that is the definition, what prevents us from calling this a commercial self-storage?
It is. Because it says for the storage of personal, household or small business storage. Is that what you mean?
On the title, 20 foot
A building or buildings consisting of these self-contained units that are leased or rented on an individual basis. So by definition of being leased or rented, you're defining a business.
So if 400 is maybe too restrictive, does anyone else have a, a square footage that they would propose? That we could think about or discuss or modify or not?
And, and I'll put this out there because it was suggested that these be allowed by special permit. So Bob, if you're concerned that this might be too small, I mean, we might, we could consider taking that out and then that would be one of the items that's discussed or approved during the special permit process.
I think that makes sense because there's no area that it says like, yes, you can definitely do it. It has to be reviewed through us anyways, so having a square footage or not, I don't, I mean, having no square footage, I think makes more sense in that case.
I tend to agree, I tend to agree with that. I mean, if, if, you know, I'd probably just remove it. Just, and it's mostly just, I don't know what I don't know. I don't, it's just
Well, and, and to add another
That's my only concern.
Yeah, and, and just to add another, just as you're thinking through this and about the restrictions, a number of towns responded that they don't allow them at all. And, and in a very adamant way, they expressed that they don't allow them at all, but
Yeah, because as attractive as you can make them, they're still generally not attractive. But I was also going to say that there's nothing that restricts a tenant or a renter from renting multiple 400 square foot units either. So I don't really, I think, I think, I, I don't, Stephanie, I mean, you didn't say what your guess was as to the intent, but I'm assuming that once you exceed a certain size storage, you are maybe dealing with a commercial business on like a larger scale or something like that. Because most people don't really have the need for space that much larger. Even if they did, they're going to rent, you know, six of them.
Yeah, so this made sense to me when I, when I saw that a lot of communities had this limitation. It made sense when we were thinking in particular, if you were to, if, if someone were to build one of these units in one of our economic development growth areas where there was a lot of multifamily housing, where people didn't have a lot of storage, well, wouldn't you want the facility to be able to offer more people the capability of storing? And this, this kind of seemed like a decent size. Again, this is what other communities are already, where they're restricting, it seems to be pretty consistent, the 400 square feet. But if you're, and especially if you're thinking that if this is, you're, you're going to construct this in a mixed-use area, that it, you probably don't want this giant warehouse-looking building with unlimited individual storage space and larger units.
Well, my, my, actually, my concern is, is, is kind of the opposite of that. Like, I'm, when you put a number on it, it's almost, and I, I granted, it's a special permit analysis, but when you, when you put a number like that, you're almost implicitly saying that if you go in under that number, that, you know, there's a presumption that it's going to be approved in some fashion by the planning board. And, and the way that this kind of came to us was, well, you know, we want to put this out there in the event that the right project comes along. And so I guess from my perspective, what I was thinking is that if it's, if we can kind of take that out, maybe, that we would have a little bit more flexibility later on down the road in the event we didn't want it.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
Point. And I'm fine with taking it out, if that's
Well, we're, we're still going, as a board, we're still going to be able to approve or reject the building and the size of the actual building or the space that they're proposing to use as self-storage regardless of the size anyway, right?
Yeah, but I think, I, I think Bob makes a really good point that if you set that number out there, it does give a presumption that it would be approved regardless of the size. As long as it was under the 400.
Well, if it looks like a self-storage building, then I'm not going to vote for it either way, but
But the lawyer's worried about the, the, the challenge in Superior Court after.
Yeah, so let's just
Yeah, and it was a great
I, I'm, I'm going to strike it out.
Let's follow the lawyer's recommendation on this one.
Because general self-storage, they're not going to want it that big, but like Robert says, it entices them to now ma- make it that bigger less.
Yep.
Right.
Just, just going back to the self-storage on the table. Either you misunderstand, misunderstand that like Chris did or you make that wording better, so you don't need to have got to a definition. You can go to a definition as well, but I think it's commercial self-storage units or service. I think that's the real description of what we are talking about. And self-storage is not
Yeah.
It's, it's not a good wording on that table, in my opinion.
Like instead of building, it should say a business.
Yeah, commercial self-storage service. Or something like that. I think that's the way to describe online item, self-storage. Before someone to go and look for a definition, and the definition is just a support, not offense. Someone needs to read this table. It's better to go reading what this really is. My opinion, but
Okay, well, let's stick with this, with the change. And if anyone finds a way better, completely different definition, then I guess we can re reconsider it.
I think what Amos is saying is though, it's the word self-storage, but I also think that's pretty understood nomenclature.
Yes, but someone on this meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, read that and, and understood it wrong. And I think most people will, looking at this. They will need to look for this and look for that. If someone wants to put a commercial self-storage, that's what they were looking for. That's the words they weren't looking for, not self-storage.
I, I, I get calls on a, I get calls on a regular basis. There's, there's some research group that tracks in, I identify, keeps an inventory of all the self-storage units out there. I'm sure they're doing it as a service for businesses that are looking to locate. And what they, how they reference it is self-storage. But, but again, I mean, it's up to the board.
I, I don't know that it's necessary, but I mean, I don't know that it does any harm to put the word "commercial" in front of it or in parentheses or something like that. I don't know that it's
I like, I like the idea of parentheses. I just feel like commercial self-storage might make it look like big businesses could be storing their stuff.
I like, I like self-storage with "commercial" in parentheses after.
Yeah, we'll do that. Okay. So, Mr. Vice Chair, any more discussion on that one?
I was just going to ask the same question. I, I think we're ready to move on unless anyone else has any other self-storage comments? I was just gonna ask the same question. I I think we're ready to move on unless anyone else has any other self-storage comments?
Um my only comment, and I don't know if you're coming to it next, but didn't we briefly discuss whether we wanted to allow it in all the districts, and I personally don't think it should be allowed in the um Cuiset districts?
Oh, so we have that right up here on the, the uses, sorry, Stephanie?
Yeah, go ahead, Peter, yeah.
Um Deb, you, the um the use, the appendix A1, take all of use regulations right here, and A2. Um so this is showing that where it's allowed by a special permit or not. Is that?
I don't know if you can read it, but the only ones that it's not are residential, residential one.
Business neighborhood.
Business neighborhood, and then uh those, I forget what the abbreviations are.
Furnace Village District, business and residential.
Is that what you were referring to, Deb?
Um, I think so, yeah, I'm looking at this on my phone, sorry, kidding, I couldn't log in on my laptop.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, it doesn't notify someone.
Um yeah, no, so um, so is it just um allowed per the planning board if it's, if it was in the, one of the Cuiset um commercial districts?
Yeah, there's no uses where it's actually a yes, all of them that it is allowed and it's planning and zoning board approval.
That is, yeah, special.
We're gonna review it anyway.
Yes.
I mean, that's probably.
I think.
But you wanted, you wanted to say no, and not even have as a option?
I mean, I think like, there's probably some instances, you know, where maybe it would be acceptable, so I guess it's, you know, rather than limit ourselves, I guess, as long as it's, my only I think, I think it's fine for us to keep it as long as it's per our um you know, per our goat. I just, I also know, like, sometimes I've heard Greg say, you know, that if they meet all of the criteria, that it's, you know, as a board, you know, uh, you know, we, I I don't wanna, I don't wanna put words into anyone's mouth, but that that were maybe more um, you know, we ought to say allow things if they meet all of the parameters of it, so I just, sometimes, I don't know, I think it's harder to vote against things if um, you know, we don't say no, but I I think we can keep it like this for now and.
I mean, I, that's a really good point, Deb, and that was really, that's kind of gets to what I was, was driving at as well. Is there a I mean, I hadn't really thought about it in terms of Cuiset in particular. What's, what is your concern there?
That as long as somebody meets all of the, you know, criteria that we have in terms of, you know, lot size and you know, parking and, you know, they added some elements to try and make it blend in, then what, what grounds are we saying no?
Well, that, no, 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 I I'm with you there. What is it in specifically about Cuiset that would kind of make you reluctant to allow it at all?
Because um Route 138 is already, like, I feel like the whole point of us creating the Cuiset was to try and kind of revamp and give a new life to at least a certain section on Route 138, and I think by allowing a self-storage ability, it's sort of, what, like, is that an improvement? Is that the intent of why we created the Cuiset Commercial District in the first place? Ed, I think, like, is it possible that something could be created um that could be very tasteful, possibly?
No, you're right. At the last meeting, we talked about maybe like um, like, you know, non, non-conventional self-storage. But if, if it does get to the point where, you know, it's the special permit that we sort of feel like we have to approve, and then then they say, oh, well, you know, I didn't have, there's no space for landscaping because of this and that, then all of a sudden, it just looks like a self-storage and we feel like we have no other choice.
Peter, could I read from the Cuiset Commercial District in the zoning, which might help the discussion?
Yeah, I know, we have a lot of design standards for that, at least that zone, right? Go ahead.
Right, right. So the purpose of the district, which was established to promote and regulate development in the emerging commercial corridor on Washington Street. You know, that's the primary purpose, and of course, the availability of sewer capacity is expected to spur interest in the area. So then underneath that, we have promote health, public health, safety and welfare, which is basically any zoning is um the purpose is to do that. Then preserve community character while enhancing economic opportunity. So I think you, you know, you've got the balance of community character at the same point, um you know, bringing in new commercial endeavors. Establish requirements, standards and guidelines that will ensure predictable, fair and cost-effective development review and permitting. Establish development standards to allow context-sensitive design and creative site planning. And then B, sub-districts in order to improve the public realm, create a more desirable and attractive district and provide incentives for economic development or redevelopment. And then the, the, within each of the districts, it just talks about like, Subdist- District A is the most advantageous location to add potential sewer capacity and has other market draws such as access to Route 24, but it doesn't talk any more specifically about kind of the look and feel of the district, um neither subject. So I mean, what I read into that is that right, right now, the, that district is pretty nondescript. There's not as, eh eh, you know, people talk a lot in in the planning world about a sense of arrival or place. It really is a lot of commercial businesses, but again, not necessarily any kind of particular design style that you could identify with. And also, it's not very walkable, and that's a lot of what's been talked about over the years, is making these commercial districts, um at least portions of them walkable and attractive to bringing people to do business, maybe work, take advantage of the other commercial activities that exist within the area, not just a drive to do one errand and depart, but kind of a staying point.
So, with a self-storage that is not attractive, detract from this zone, and I think the answer is most probably, but I'm not sure.
Well, if the, again, if uh as part of your special permit, you are requiring design review, that's where the board would have a say.
But, but not having any design guidelines. Meeting, meeting the requirements i- is enough, and we we cannot say no because it's ugly, or what is ugly, you know?
Basically, what you're saying, Amos, is without design guidelines to kind of govern the decision-making process and the aesthetics, you're afraid that what you get may not fit within what the vision the town is for the area.
Yeah, we, we were not a- able to say, say a lot with little cubes in it, and a sign in the front. It's not what we want, and but you will not be able to say no to it.
I said something similar last week, and then we sort of had the old, well, it's a special permit, but now we've kind of circling around back on that again, right? Well, maybe now we know why some towns just don't allow it, because they can't figure out how to, how to allow it.
Well, I wonder, I mean, eh eh, yeah, I, I wonder if the because I'm starting to think, you know, I'm glad Deb raised the, the point, and I, actually, it's funny, I thought we said no in the village bit, the uh village business district as well, but that's on a PCB there. But even in, you know, like in the Five Corners area, when, when we were talking about this initially, it struck me that we were really kind of looking more at mixed use, which is something that we've been talking about in all of these areas for a couple of years now. And how does this fit in with, with that? I mean, we kind of went through all this last year in detail, and we're really trying to promote mixed use, and I don't have a problem with kind of that creative self-storage if it's gonna promote the mixed use, you know, if you've got, instead of office buildings, nobody wants to be in an office anymore. Instead of that, you got self-storage up on the top, you got a, some retail establishment in the bottom, that kind of fits in with the walkable neighborhoods, it might make it financially feasible for a developer to do, I'm all for it. But unless we kind of specify that that's what we're looking for here, I think, you know, we are opening ourselves up to the issues that Amos and and Deb have been talking about, that Peter mentioned last week. So I'm wondering if, if we have to specify, if our intent really is, you know, mixed-use projects, I think we should probably specify that here.
Yeah, even like, even imagine like a, say, a multifamily unit, that actually had storage areas for each, for each tenant, if they wanted to have, you know, put their three different, you know, you know, three different uh, you know, bicycles in there, or maybe a canoe or a kayak. A lot of apartments don't really, you know, afford that, that possibility. So.
That might, might fall under like a different, like, that might be considered. Apartments, or if they're not renting them out to the public, and it's just for use in that building, that might be different, but I, I just think um, inter, I mean, we're talking about commercial self-storage, and I think that there has been a proliferation of new self-storage, and if I think about well, where in town, if I wanted to build self-storage, where would I build it? I mean, Route 138 already has some self-storage, it's probably like a great place, and yeah, we're not really saying you can't do it, and um, so yeah, I guess, yeah, I'm just back to that same concern on like, on what grounds are we able to legally disallow it or not approve it, and um, and so, if that is the case, I think you know, I, I think we would like, I think having a self-storage building in any of these new districts we've created really would not be um what the intent of creating that zoning was, so I think it would be safer to not allow it. You know, I I suppose that those types of businesses would always have the possibility of trying to go through ZBI, right?
They could, yes, they could go for a variance, um a use variance. And I, I think that's really the question for the board. Is this something that you feel would be advantageous use in, in these districts or any of them? I mean, you know, this is, this was just a draft. Um and, you know, to Bob, kind of your point, it sounds like you're thinking that it might be a good mix um in a mixed-use area. But how do you make sure achieves that goal?
Right.
So I think if, if, if we're there going to do blend with the intention of the zone, the, the area, aesthetically pleasant and not just that, yes, it might be a good, a good fit. Uh, and you want to develop the area, and and this does that part of it commercially. But eh, our issue is more, more, mostly aesthetic.
Yeah, and going back to what? I, I think, Deb, you were, you were saying they could go for a variance, and I think the question is that that could be the case, and the zoning board of appeals is very deferential to input from the planning and zoning board. The question would be and 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 so, that if a project were proposed in a, in a district like this, and there were conversations ahead of time before going to the Board of Appeals, say with the, the uh Planning Board Chair and the Planning Department on what, if, if someone were to seek a variance, what the board would wanna see, and you could get some level of assurance that that would play to the board's intents.
Is it possible to maybe like, to make it like a, that the use would be like a a Board of Appeals spe- special permit, and then the, the site plan would be a planning board special permit? Would that make it just an extra layer of?
Well, you, you'd still, so it could be a zoning board of appeals special permit. And, but I, I would think that if that were the case, we'd want to bring the Board of Appeals into the discussion before making that decision.
The harder, the variance is the harder.
Right, also, you'd have site plan review anyway, so even if it were a variance that was granted, because it would be a change of use, a new use, a commercial use, it would still fall under site plan review. But remember, site plan review is a little limited. You don't, you can ask for design
No, that's why, that's why everyone has to state a special credit for us, so.
Well, and the only other point that I, I wanna bring up, which we already touched on too, though. I mean, so I've done, worked on a number of self-storage um buildings in other towns, but in, in every single case of every one that I've ever worked on, and most of the ones I've seen, um they are geared towards cars. So the idea is, you pull up in your car, a lot of these, you drive through the actual building, um and you um, you know, park your car near your storage unit, and you don't even have to like get out. Like, you don't park your car in a space and then take your, you know, um things with your hands, you know, up to your unit, and so they're, they're generally, a lot of the new ones are very automobile-friendly. Certainly not pedestrian-friendly, and so I feel like beyond the aesthetic, it's also not promoting that um lack of vehicle um type of facility that we're, or the um buildings that we are looking to promote.
Right, and and a self, self-start storage generally wouldn't be, I mean, you know, the whole idea of storage is to put things away usually, uh more than just a few items, so it's not really a pedestrian, like walk-up and generally put your goods and belongings in a facility. Area could have a, you know, the facade could be human-scale and designed, you know, almost like maybe a faux facade.
Yeah, you, you can, you can, you can do a facade that covers what is behind, but also, in the, in the city, there are storages that are in eh, in, in the big buildings with, with elevators, so.
I mean, so we could try to, I don't think we can, we can't, can't do it right now, but, you know, we could try to establish some design standards for self-storage, and just look at it again next week with design standards, if we wanna keep it on or if we think we need to do more work on this. I mean, because just a few of us have been talking for quite some time of this, imagining, you know, there might be this, the same um questions at town meeting if we were to leave it close to what it is right now.
And so it's up to, to the board to even move forward with this. Is this something, you know, you, you decide whether you really wanna move forward with it or not?
What do you think, Bob?
No, I think that may, eh, I think what Peter suggests, it makes some sense. I mean, we're not voting on it tonight. Um, I think it's, it's an idea that's worth exploring further. But I think some additional discussion is definitely warranted, but I think design guidelines might maybe alleviate some of the concerns that we all have expressed tonight.
And then we might even go through and say, okay, maybe just increase it, you know, increase it, A, I think that's like the depot side maybe, but then, you know, someone will say, well, that doesn't allow it to happen at the other spot, so we have to go over that, right? And then, sort of like we did with Furnace Village, so.
Out of ignorance, if there are design guidelines, they need to.
Maybe they should just be applied.
They need to match it. If there is design guidelines, so those are just.
Well, there, there are guidelines in some of the sub-districts, right, like Furnace Village and, and Cuiset. But then, you know, in the regular business, they're just, they aren't really, you know, there are design guidelines, just related to the, just the business zone, the underlying district.
No, my question was legally, if come to the, to, to our board, and they don't match, or they don't meet the design by guidelines, can we say no because of that? That was the question. Can we? Can we not approve?
Well, I hope so, otherwise, kind of what's the purpose of, of setting special permit?
I'm asking, are there guidelines, recommendations, or they need to meet it? I, I don't know, I say, it started by saying I am ignorant in that one. Design guidelines is a, is a requirement?
I mean, not at the moment, because we don't have it. Well, I mean, I guess you have some, we have some general one. Yeah.
Actually, I mean, Quisit and Furnace Village are actually okay because we have design guidelines, it's more just the regular business districts, say. Other sections of one thirty-eight that, where we, we would only have the. Any guidelines applicable to the underlying district, which is the business district.
So will this satisfy, we need to work on this more or?
Be helpful, I I I had forgotten about about this, Stephanie, thanks for bringing that up.
So it, it looks like maybe a good place to start with the design guidelines because Deb mentioned the Quisit Commercial District in particular. Are the design guidelines that currently exist. And really, I'm I'm looking at them right now, oh, can you see them? Oh, that's what you're thinking, bringing that up.
It's helpful.
I thought you meant the topic in general, I'm like, well, it's been on the agenda for a while, but okay.
So it looks, I mean, there are lots of shells in here and I'll, um, defer to the lawyer, but when you have shells. Those are, um, those are things that, yes, give you the ability to say, no, we're not approving that design.
Yeah, no, I, this is helpful.
And I think we should, I think we should keep this open for the next meeting, we all should spend our time reading. The existing design guidelines that we have for each of the districts. And then hopefully we'll be able to make a good decision at the next one, is that, is it okay to move on and? Kind of that suggestion?
All right, I'm going to share this right now, I'm going to email this to everybody.
Because right now isn't the time to go through the design guidelines for Quisit and Furnace Village and try to figure out if they're gonna fit.
So you you answered my question, we can say no because doesn't need design guidelines, so.
Yeah. So I'm going to send these, again, I think, I'm pretty certain these are available online through the town website. In the Planning Board page, but I'm going to send them to everyone. So you have them handy.
Good to review anyways, so.
And how the, how the public. When reading our bylaws, understand that there is a design guidelines.
And I sometimes just, sometimes your microphone just doesn't come out, come through clarify.
I understood the question and I'm not, um. Again, I, the design guidelines are available online, I'm, again, I'm quite certain of that. And, um. When someone comes to talk, we should be talking with them, you know, when we talked with. Six sixty-one Washington Street, Nan Walsh, um, they were directed to the design guidelines.
So the answer is you direct them to the design guidelines or. Should should that be on the bylaws that you need to meet design by law?
Probably, probably in the, um. We can take a look, I I wouldn't suggest it at this point in time because we're really running short on time to get things to town meeting. But certainly in the, um, Planning Board Rules and Regulations. That could be an update if it's not in there in the site plan review, which I don't think it is, I don't think it references where a district has. Design guidelines, the applicant must adhere to those design guidelines. Sounds like that would be pretty basic language and that doesn't require all the formal hearing process, it just. You could discuss that at another meeting.
Yeah, I I I think you need to put in a place. In which whoever is reading the bylaws, they are, there's design by guidelines that we need to meet.
Scroll down to the next.
Okay, let me close out of that. And, oh, wait a minute. Sorry. Here we go. Okay, this is, uh, an addition as an accessory use in the Quisit Smart Growth Overlay District. For outside dining associated with a restaurant. In the subzones B and C. And the reason, I think someone asked this, actually, I was going over these with the town administrator and he asked why not A. And it's because restaurants aren't allowed in zone A and I believe that's because that's the section that's all residential.
Yeah, Island Court section. Oh, this is, oh, I'm sorry, this is Quisit right now.
Yeah, this is the Smart Growth Overlay District, so Quisit Commons.
And these are all special permit by the nature of the district, are they not? We have a special permit here, the table of uses, but.
It could, so I'm, I had proposed, I just proposed by right. If, and because you do have site plan review. Um, if it's by, if if the board wants by special permit, that's fine.
Well. Just wondering if all the other areas in town are. Of, uh, Board of Appeals special permit, right?
Yeah.
So I would think that at least a fit somewhat matched that, this would be a special permit, but. Whatever anyone else thinks is fine with me.
I mean, I'm comfortable with it by right back there.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's kind of the way I feel about it in general, but, okay. Anyone else? Is by right acceptable? If we choose to allow that in the first place?
Yeah, I think that looks good.
It's good, it's good for me.
Me too.
Okay, great, that was an easier one.
Okay, this one. Is, oh, this is the one that the text of the bylaw states that kennels. Are prohibited as a use in the residential district, yet in the. Table of uses, both under principal uses and accessory uses. It has allowed by special permit with the zoning board of appeals. So this was really just to make it consistent with the intent of the bylaw in the text. The presumption and the presumption, because we've had instances over the years where, um, the text. Says one thing and the table of uses says another and in consulting with town council on that. The, um, you know, it it's his opinion that the text prevails. And it would, it would seem to make sense that dog kennels don't necessarily belong in a residential area.
Anyone have any questions?
Also.
Okay. The next one, um, everyone will recall that Goodspeed Estates, as we were looking at the. Um, architectural designs for the different units. That a couple of the site plans showed a less than twenty-five foot front yard setback. And it was the chairs believe that the. The zoning, the code, the extra text of zoning. Indicated or supported that. That twenty-five foot front setback, which is the standard in the residential district should be maintained. But in fact, the length, the. Text is silent on that and it does say that siding rear yard setback shall be at least ten feet. Except as otherwise provided in the section, so the proposed language there is front yard shall be at least twenty-five feet. Unless specifically allowed otherwise by the Planning and Zoning Board.
Does that go back to, uh, we'll call it Bob's rule, not Robert's rules, sorry, Robert's rule, but about, you know, like, once we. Once we put the, uh, more. More expectations in there, then they're, they're almost. This would be harder for us to ask for like a change.
So. I I think in this instance, what what you're stating is that the, the. Standard twenty-five foot front yard set setback in a residential development persists. But it gives the board the flexibility to reduce that if it makes sense and. Personally, I think that fits in with the overall intent of the flexible development. That, um. You know, you may not, you may not want all of those front yards in a particular development depending on how it's designed and again. How it, the context within the rest of the neighborhood that that development's being constructed in. But then you might have an area where it makes sense to have maybe a twenty-five, a twenty-foot. Or, uh, a fifteen-foot setback and this just would give the planning board the opportunity to consider that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I thought this was a good idea in the first place, so I'm okay with it.
Twenty-five is by right and then anything less.
Correct.
Well, yeah, yes, except that flexible, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, uh, just why, why on that one is the verbiage in two different from three?
Let's see, shall be at least ten feet except is. Why is it?
Yeah, one, so on two, it's side and rear, because it's the same idea, you're, you're.
Do you think you should ju- I should, we should just add front yard, well, but.
As otherwise provided in the section.
Yeah.
Oh, except by otherwise provided in this section?
Yeah, why would we just make it the same after the comma, I think is where you're getting at.
Yeah, it it is and as I'm looking through, I'm just noticing that, you know, because Stephanie, I think you brought up a good point. That, you know, in in the context of the flexible development, you know, we should have a little bit of flexibility. Um, and I kind of see that actually almost written into number one, where it's talking about reduced area and frontage. Um, and I think that's what it means after the comma in two as well. And so I think maybe if we just. That's what I'm thinking.
Okay, okay.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's, that's fine, I think I had a particular reason, but, um, that.
That would still fit.
It's always, always subject to, you know, someone else looking at it and going, hmm. And making a better point, okay, so right here. Okay.
Oh, the other way, mimic language in three below.
Which do you want, do you want, do you want?
Good question.
I thought, I thought Bob was saying it should be the same as two above.
Actually, two above be the same as three below.
Yeah, uh, good, good point, good question.
I I thought that that's what you said.
Well, what does it mean as otherwise provided in the section, I guess, what's number two mean, that's, that's where my.
I, I'm, I was just going to look that up to see. I think there may be other references that didn't apply the twenty-five foot setback.
I think it would be the other way around, if we, if we can specifically allow it otherwise, then that would just solve the question about. What it, what number two is ma- means.
Yeah, it may, yeah, I I I agree with Peter.
Okay, okay, I get it, yes, and I agree.
And I would just take out the otherwise, though, it's unless specifically allowed by the Planning and Zoning Board, just take out that.
Stephanie, there's another way to do it.
Okay, I can only do one thing at a time.
Just, just a second until you do any corrections. So you say front yard shall be twenty-five feet and rear and side should be ten. You can merge both of them on one sentence. Put the front yard and the side and everything in one sentence.
Yeah, that's true. Less words, the better.
Yeah, and and make more clear is one, one sentence. With the front yard and the side yards and the back yard, all them in one sentence.
You still have to have ex- except as, um, or you still have to have unless specifically allowed. Otherwise by the Planning and Zoning Board for both, like. After each, because you don't, it won't, you know, someone will. I think, but.
I say we leave it separate and make the after comma on three the same as two, I mean, vice versa. Delete otherwise.
Yep.
And that, that's a comment.
So what do we, um?
Oh, just deleting the.
I'm doing that.
Yeah, just delete otherwise.
Yes, that's the word, okay, sorry, got lost there.
I always say I have to do that stuff right on, but.
It is hard, and especially it it's kind of kludgy the way it works.
Yeah, my typing does worse for some reason when I'm doing.
Yeah.
All right, the next one again is a housekeeping item and this is to, um, have consistency between the text. Which indicates that, let's see, how did, how did we do this summary of the changes, um. So, two thirty-five dash nineteen allows bed and breakfast operations. With from four to ten guest rooms by special permit with the. Planning and zoning board and in the table of uses, it had five to ten rooms for rent, so we're just making this consistent. With text.
But, okay, so.
I thought it said fifty-four rooms and I was like. But I get it now, and the four of the dash, it's like it goes right across the five.
It does, it it, yes, yes. I changed it multiple times going, wait a minute, wait a minute, why does it say that?
Right.
All right.
Here's my question, Stephanie, it's allowed by special permit, so we have to put SP or PCB there instead of yeses.
Oh, yes, wait a minute, wait a minute, that's right, this was a, yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, starting with the, with the A, principal uses A, that's.
So the question is, and this is, I think this is why this is written this way, because I was asked this either at the last meeting or when I was reviewing it with. I think when I was re- reviewing it with the town administrator and now I can see why it's written this way, so. Bed and breakfasts. Up to, let's see, this, it says, and the way it's written here, it says PCB for four to ten rooms for rent. It means that if you have a bed and breakfast with up to, with with three ru- rooms. Two to three rooms for rent, it's.
Okay, I see.
And anything more than that, but up to, no greater than ten, you, um, it's a special permit, but.
Okay, all right, you're right, that makes sense.
So this needs to also be PCB if that's what we're. Changing it to because it says, let's see. It it, to be consistent with the language, so I need to change this to PCB.
Do you think it would have to say not allowed over ten? Somewhere to be clear, or do you think that it's clear the way it's written?
I think it's clear when you think about it for a minute, it's not immediately obvious.
It's like self-storage, if we don't allow self-storage, it's not allowed.
Right, right.
Gotcha.
Um, and then, what about Quisit, is Quisit B? Just like the middle part where there's, so I said those houses and things like that? Houses and apartments in Quisit B? I know, just clear out inconsistencies, but I was thinking maybe Quisit B, we could allow it, but. Like that big white house, you know, those big white apartment building on the corner, that would be.
Wouldn't that be nice? Before it fell completely into disarray. Let me take a look at the zoning, at the full table of uses. So crease it B allows. One-two family or duplex, no multi-family, crease it, um, crease it C is where the multi-family is allowed.
Okay, well, not multi-family, but just like the middle part where there, I think they were just more like. We're like, we're like paper bag junctioners now.
Right, yeah.
I mean, may, I know there are not a lot of opportunities for a bed and breakfast, but I don't see why we would, you know, limit that. Sort of similar to France Village Residential.
What do you think? I'm, I'm for it.
Yeah, okay, anyone else? The whole, the whole crease it, why not just allow it? I mean, if someone wanted to build a nice bed and breakfast, then.
Yes.
Yeah, I think there, it's pedestrian friendly. I feel like we talked about how there's not really any, um, lodging in that area.
Yeah, you know, some of those smaller lots might could use a reuse maybe with a, a bigger, nicer looking building that happens to be a bed and breakfast.
So this is PCB.
Or just, well, there's yeses, because everything's PCB.
Oh, it's a yes.
It's a yes.
Okay, that, yes.
And what do you guys think? And then, we just Furnace Village Residential, I think, could be a yes also.
I think so too.
On here.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I mean, I thought all of crease it could be yeses, because it's kind of mixed up. I don't know, you know, I don't know where the big white house that isn't. You know, why would you limit? I mean, no one's gonna turn honeydew into a bed and breakfast, but.
It would be like a small hotel in the other areas, because it would, it wouldn't be a con. Would you allow, if you allow it, and some of those residences that still exist that are prime, you know, most of them are being used as businesses. Or someone's renting, those could be converted to a bed and breakfast.
Yeah, I just put yes across the board, really, there, except for that part on this line, but what is, what do you guys think? I'll just leave it like what we just discussed.
I heard everybody say, I thought I heard everybody say, yeah, why not?
I agree.
Yes.
I mean, we're right, we're, we're talking about self-storage, and now we're saying, oh, we're gonna allow self-storage, but not.
But not bed and breakfast, right, right. These don't have to be perfect, because this isn't the word.
Yeah, you just need, they're all PCB anyways, you just have to have yeses there, I think.
Yep, I'll fix, that's just so I know what we're changing it to tomorrow. Yeah. Okay, on to the next.
Yes, please.
This is the elimination of the minimum lot to depth requirement for lots in the Furnace Village District. And this, um, I wanted to put this in the. Explanation in the warrant, but I thought people might get confused. My understanding is this is an artifact of previous editions of the Furnace Village District zoning. When you were working through it, there was a suggestion by the consultant that this lot with lot depth to width made sense. But, so it, it's really.
Those other changes, which. Allow both front. Oh, just, oh, just lot depth, not.
Lot depth, that, yeah. So it's just.
Delete that.
Leaving that requirement there. And, and what we'll do is actually, I, I will have to go back and we'll put like a dash, like you have under the maximum. Lot coverage where it doesn't apply, we just have dashes, we'll fill those with dashes.
Yeah, maybe we should look at this chart since we have, we're moving along now, right? Maybe we should just look at the chart quickly, make sure it all makes sense. I was wondering about maximum percent of lot coverage by structure. Oh, because it's down the bottom, I see. Oh, because we have different, yeah, for different zones, we have different regulations.
Right, right.
Okay, I guess we'll have to trust that.
That these, right, yeah. Okay, we all set on that one? Okay, back to the in-law apartments. We talked about this at the last meeting. And, let's see. Oh, I, I didn't update this, and I meant to, because I think what the final, um, what, what the board kind of thought might make sense. Was that. A front entrance to an attached in-law apartment could be allowed as long as it did not give the appearance. Of being a main entrance. It would ha- need to look like in, um, I'm going to use the word ancillary, but that wasn't, that wouldn't be the right word. Yeah, help me out here.
Yeah, I think we said that it, um, wouldn't conflict with the primary entrance. That the other entrance would be secondary or subordinate.
This. Front facing entrance. Must be. Ordinate in appearance. The main entrance. Does that work, Deb?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, and, and I, and I, do we still have the part? Yeah, it still says it would have to be approved by the fire department too, so, because I know sometimes they're.
The numbering, the numbering's, and, and you understand that, because it's supposed to indicate that. You know, there's someone they might need to go rescue if there's. Okay, so we're all set with that?
I think so.
Okay. Let's see, this one is, um, what I drafted in response to Amos's. And, and what I interpreted, um, us, from what you sent me in our discussion, were two things. A- actually, three things. One, you wanted to make sure that solar photovoltaic installations that residents. Could easily understand that they could, um, by right, install solar photovoltaic installations. On their property. Sized for the residential use of that property. So less than twenty-five kilowatts, and not be any larger than that, that. The other thing you were trying to restrict was having a commercial type facility on a residential property.
That's correct.
And then, making sure.
Basically, mention, mention that this permitted, because today, we, uh. Accessory use from the point of view of the building inspector, but it's nowhere to be found.
And then, on accessory uses. We had solar photovoltaic installation size for a primary use. Installations over twenty-five kilowatts and intended to generate electricity commercially. Above the reasonable consumption of the principal use requires site plan review by the planning and zoning board. No ground-mounted solar arrays shall be built or enlarged except in conformance with those regulations.
Yeah, that's what actually is happening.
And, and this is in the business and industrial districts, okay?
So, on this, it says only ground-mounted solar arrays over twenty-five kilowatts. What if we did a rooftop?
Yeah, rooftop too.
Okay, and why would you want, so. This will be my question, but I'm going to make a statement first. So why would you want, I thought about that, and then I thought, well, why would you want to limit? The amount on a roof, that's not interfering with anything. However, when I was reviewing these with the town administrator, because we were going over the articles, the draft warrant. And the draft articles. He, he said, why do we even need this, as this is highly regulated to begin with? And he believes that the size of a, a installation in a residential area is. Already regulated as well as within the commercial area, and he did ask that I run it by town council to get his opinion.
Yeah, that's why I really thought just had to just appendix A one, just, you could just, you know. You know, have seventeen, the principal, well, we can set it forth if we need to, but it could just be solar voltaic installations. Less than twenty-five kilowatts. I guess, well, maybe to Amos's point. And most of his point, it has to be kind of explained a little bit for people.
Yeah, so.
Just from doing solar for a couple of years, generally, the three major differentiators are under twenty-five. Uh, mostly residential, then you have twenty-five to two fifty, and then you have two fifty and greater. I know in our bylaws, from what I've seen, there's regulations for two fifty and over.
That's the large scale.
But I, I know what this is kind of, I think what this E one is trying to accomplish is. That in between twenty-five and two fifty is my thought, and I think we should put something in there for that range.
Yeah, and, and maybe mention the two fifties.
So, why don't we? I'm going to send, I've been, I will send these off to town council tomorrow. After I make all the other updates for his review, and in particular, ask him to look at this so that he can weigh in on whether we can even restrict it.
Yeah, okay, right, yeah, I can tell you, yeah, about the, whether it's a special permit or, or not, right, so.
Yeah, I think maybe we have to do some more research on this second part of it, but I think the first part should be. Included, just saying that it is acceptable to do this.
Yeah, the first part is clear, the second one is less. The reason that some industrial, and even top of the supermarket for that matter, in a commercial area. Can have a big. Solar. No problem, and we should, we should put there that we, we consider that something that you can do by, by right.
But they, by state law. By, by state law, they, they essentially can.
So I don't think we want to restrict them, I think, so in the couple towns that we were doing solar projects. Dap ground mounted, the towns would require, uh, like a decorative ornate fencing, so you don't see it from a roadway. Stuff like that, I think that is what we could look at, or like.
Safe distances from. Abutting properties, which we, we already ha- I'm, we have some of that in the large-scale ground-mounted. Solar overlay district language.
Which is, which is the two fifty and over, we don't have anything under that range.
Correct.
So, the, the idea is that, uh, solar arrays and solar energy will be developed in the future. We, we need that, and we need to let the people know that what they, they are allowed to do. And if there is, eh, eh, not putting limitation for the.
Right, we want to encourage it, I think, is the goal.
And, and remember, whether, whether we want to encourage it or not, if the state allows it, you know, if the state's allowed superseding hours. Then, you know, you kind of treat it sort of like the, like the medical marijuana where. Even though it's just allowed by the state, we can still, you know, have our own design standards, so.
Yeah, you have site, what, right, you still have site review and.
Trying to restrict and one we might be trying to promote, but at the same time, even though they're just there allowed by the state on some superseding level. Doesn't mean that we can't, you know, set some design standards, so it's done the way that we want it to be done.
So my, my thought here is, eh, are, are we going to be ready for this, for this town meeting, or do you want to spend more time?
With the second part probably.
Right, I agree, second part needs more development, the first part I think we can include.
Now, the, when you say the first part, you mean this.
That one sentence, yep.
That one sentence. Okay, so we'll strike the rest of this.
Well, you should update the table of uses for the residential district to.
Yep.
Allow solar, twenty-five kilowatts.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on. Go away.
And then, no.
Right, brighter, okay, so we want to, oh, I want to call out.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's okay, actually, straight across the board there for the, up to twenty-five kilowatts, that's okay, because it'd be fine for a business to. Have up to twenty-five kilowatts, right? Might be a mixed use. Could be a mixed use apartment with a storefront, and they want to have a few solar panels on that one, right?
Yeah, I mean, in situations like that, I think you'd want more than twenty-five, but. I think in the principal and the accessory uses, we should just say it is allowed and not specify a certain size.
Well, we, do we, we probably don't even need that if you're saying up to twenty-five here. Because it's installations, and then there's a definition for installations. Which I think I.
And that might be a good way to do it.
The larger scale.
Just allow twenty-five, up to twenty-five kilowatts across the board, and just we'll defer everything else until we look at it more.
Yes, that's, that's right, we'll strike this. Okay, so I'm going to, let's see. Eliminate this one. And we're going to eliminate, we're, we're going to eliminate this, we don't need this here, because.
Another one. No, that one is okay.
We don't need it if it's, if you have it. In the table of uses. You want it there?
Yes, because in, in B two, we're saying, this is for residential only.
Yep.
You know, it says whether roof-mounted, ground-mounted, or it cannot be allowed in the residential, so that actually. Uh, kind of elaborates on the table of use for residential.
Yep.
But then also, we're also. Considering putting the yeses across the board for under twenty-five for business and industrial. And we're not specifying that those could be mounted ground, so we. See, we're, we're modifying accessory uses in the residential district up there at B two. But then we're start, but now we're talking about under twenty-five for businesses in the appendix, so they're kind of, they're, they're similar but different.
Right, yes.
So we're not addressing accessory uses in the business district. Right there in. In B two, which is just, that's just referring, talking about residential.
So right now, your accessory uses like this, and where you're, it's specifically called, uses are specifically called out. It's generally for prohibition, and, and I kind of even had a little bit of a problem with that, because. This is what we were adding that wasn't prohibited. If you have it, if you have a definition for soda. Solar photovoltaic installations, which I do below, size for principal use, doesn't that cover it? Do you really need it up here? Where this was again, talking primarily about.
We, we, many examples of that, that you have it in both places. Give us example of that, and say that they don't match, so this is matching.
I think B three was, this, this was probably all kind of, sort of, put together, because B three was addressing. An issue in town where some people thought that contractors shouldn't allow to have, you know, a couple landscaping trucks or something. In their, in their, uh, resident, in their yard. Right, but we can use it for other thing, we can use it for other purposes if we want, if we choose to.
Either way. They are not in contradiction, so.
Are we all right with what we have here then?
I think so.
Then again, we just have a definition. So let's see, uh and the same, the special, so I'll just replicate up up above.
Okay, yeah, right.
Okay. And then this was the definition, an arrangement of solar photovoltaic panel, panel. Panels installed and functioning for the purpose of generating energy.
Then Stephanie, just eighteen above there, I eighteen in the appendix, right on the same page. Are we deferring all that to the P Z B question marks?
Yes, when I said replicate above, I'm, that's the, it's the same is what we're doing. Yeah, that's more a note to myself that just do what we did, make the changes that were that we made above. Okay. And this was the accessory structures, and this was submitted by Deb to try to kind of limit. Again, this raised, when I went over this with the 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 town administrator, raised a lot of the same type of questions that have been raised. You know, if this probably makes a lot of sense when someone's proposing constructing something on a site and it's a small parcel and it would be overwhelming to the existing structure, but what if you had a big old antique barn or something you were developing, but the, what was proposed is that a garage or carport attached to any one side of the dwelling. So the word one is being added, and then D, the footprint of an attached garage shall not be greater than fifty percent first floor principal structure. A garage or storage space for private vehicles may provide space for up to three vehicles not in excess of eight thousand pounds each, or greater than thirty feet in length in the residential district, and no accessory structure shall be permitted to exceed nine hundred square feet of ground force base without a special permit.
So this doesn't say anything about a detached garage, correct?
Deb, do you want to speak to that? I mean, this is the, I put the language as you had.
So usually detached and attached are, um I, there are some of the same rules that overlap like lot coverage, um but generally, they're yes, they're, actually, Stephanie, I can't, I'm trying to remember, I think some towns specifically use the words detached and attached. I don't, I don't think can't remember now offhand, do we have? Well, on our uses, our table of uses, we actually, I think, I I have to get it out in front of me. Let me grab it, but um.
I guess I'm just thinking, um like, for instance, like if I wanted to put a huge barn in my backyard. That wouldn't fall under this D is what I'm thinking, because that's not an attached building to buy.
I think we have uh different like setbacks and distances you have to maintain.
At detached garage is B, a storage structure.
Yeah, let me, I'm gonna grab my.
But see, yeah, so A says A attached garage, B is storage structure.
Right. The barn would be like a storage structure detached. Garage just, and there's no size constraint on that. Is is, and I agree with that, is that the goal of what you're trying to do, Deb, is that the, only the attached garage have a limitation of size, because that doesn't, I guess uh restrict some of that the secondary structure like storage structure to be any, to be much larger than their house.
So I feel like um when I was looking at other towns and our town, I feel like our town has not a lot of language and not a lot of specifics about this, and there are certain or a lot, a number of other surrounding towns do have a lot of language where they really get into, you know. You know, you can only have up to, you know, one boat or one trailer or um and they describe like the nature of all the accessory structures and so forth, where I feel like we don't really say a whole lot, but I think my intent was that if your accessory structure, like in the same way that we put language in for in-laws that your in-law must be a certain square footage or else um I think there's a little bit of language about how uh you can have it be a little bit bigger by going to the planning board. But we, you know, we put a number on it, and I think it's nine hundred square feet, um because we don't want the in-law apartment to be we want to be proportion to the main residence, so I'm thinking if an accessory structure is accessory to your principal structure should it be more than fifty percent or larger than your principal structure? And then is your accessory structure really the principal structure because it's actually larger footprint-wise than your actual house? Like right now, we have no language on it, you know, you could build a ten-car garage if you want, and you could have three cars on one side and another four cars on another side. And you could have it be um in front of the house or like, we don't have any language about it at all, and the saw the eight thousand square feet, I think that's what I have written down, I don't remember. Uh most uh even trucks aren't close to that size, so it's just kind of trying to prohibit commercial vehicles or um you know, just storage of vehicles that aren't residential in nature. And I think I'd actually even be okay with some of this as being, and I think there is that excerpt in there about um by special permit. It's just that right now, we don't have any language really at all about any of this stuff, like you could have it be however big you want, and you could have a garage on each side of your house if you wanted, and you could be storing tractor trailers.
And we kind of, I I'm trying to think back on this discussion from last year, I I'm just looking at the definition again of accessory use, and there was that limiting language in there, and I'll just read it just to maybe this will jog my memory, but it says accessory use by area shall be interpret interpreted not to exceed ten percent of the area of the total use of the structure or lot on which it is located.
I think we went back and forth with like whether or not, and I guess this is my whole point is like, it's just not super clear. Like, we could have a discussion about it and arrive at one decision, Stephanie and I could have a dis- discussion, maybe it arrived in another you know, so it's just not super clear, but I thought we said accessory use. Like a garage would still be an accessory use to a residence. It doesn't, it's not the same thing as an accessory structure. Like um a kitchen um in a house is an accessory or or a, like a commercial kitchen in a building is like um could be an accessory used to a business, but it doesn't mean that that um that building is a commercial kitchen, like there, it's, they're two different things.
Maybe I could workshop where you do some, have a side business or something like that, right, yeah, that, that's, that's a use.
This section you just read, where did you find that?
Uh it's in the definitions, so if you.
Okay, it's in the definitions, not in thirteen, two thirty-five, fourteen. See, that's the thing, we have accessory structures, extras, accessory uses, and then in the definitions, there's additional discussion, I'm turning to that now, and that's where we, a a big place we got hung up last year was because.
I really think that we do need to look at that all, like Bob said, up for the purpose of um wanting to have the board decide on on what, you know, Devin, Stephanie has worked on, I think this is actually okay, and we'll just be up to, we're not really, we're not fixing anything, but I don't think we're breaking anything either by adding this to what's already maybe a little confusing.
I I think you're probably right about that, but I'm not sure that this this really accomplishes what the goal that Deb set out to achieve here.
Right, it's because it's not addressing detached.
Right, that that's the only thing, I mean, I I agree, Peter, with your, with your assessment.
Well, when I make a comment about just include the footprint of the attached garage or a storage structure to to D, and then that would accomplish what I believe Deb was intending to accomplish. And.
That would make it more clear, I think.
And then um I'm not like, not like gungho for it to limit that, but I I will agree to to vote for it. And then that would just leave maybe possibly Greg to have try and, and I'm not sure how the rest of you feel.
But where is only attached? And not attached or not attached.
Well, I think when this was brought up last year, it 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 certainly wasn't specific to attached, and I think it was more specific to detached.
So, it'll be easy enough, just, you know, if we want to put something to the town meeting, that the fo- for D, the footprint of an attached attached garage or storage structure. Right, you said to put in or storage structure. And we'll have something that we can vote for, or vote against. Not, I'm not, you know.
Isn't storage thrash- structure in B?
I think the fifty percent um maybe a little limiting, and I mean, if I was to put a detached garage on my property fifty percent of my first floor would be a pretty small garage, less than a.
Although then we could put an E in there that says the detached garage can't, this put put in an E that says the storage structure can't be larger than the the house, or larger than twice time two times the principal structure. That's when we have to quantify it, we have to agree on our quantification.
I keep coming, now that I've ref- kind of thought back on our discussions last year, this is like a a solution in search of a problem. Looking at it right now, and it's saying tool sheds, garden sheds, this is C, existing C. Storage sheds, garages, or other like buildings shall be allowed as accessory uses. And so you go back to the definitions of accessory use and it says it shall be interpreted not to exceed ten percent of the area of the total use of the structure or lot on which it is located. I think there is a limit that's built into this.
Oh, I I think, I think actually, what were you talking about, Bob, if on C here, under accessory structures? I think that uses should actually be accessory uh structures. But then we have to define that.
The structure has a use in that, so it's being used as a garage.
Yeah, because I I I actually think, and see, this is, so the way that this came up as i- i- if my memory serves me, the way this came up is that I think somebody in town, it may have been the building inspector, said, oh, yeah, you know, you can put up any any building in the back of your yard that you want, and we were all kind of scratching our heads and saying, well, that doesn't sound right. And I don't think, I mean, the way I interpret this, I don't think that that is right.
Right, I think you're correct.
But so just to, I'm just so if I'm understanding it correctly, so like if we just use our one acre, which is our standard lot for a single family, is forty thousand, let's just say it's forty thousand, which is close to an acre. So you're saying that according to accessory use it can be four thousand square feet, so as long as you have an acre lot even if you have a house that's only so if you had a four thousand square foot house, your first floor would only be two thousand square feet. So your garage would be two times the size of your first floor footprint.
That might have been intentional, like twice as big or so.
So I mean, I guess it's just a matter of like, and and I guess is it clear that that is, that that relates back to it, like, or do we need to add any language that makes it more clear that accessory use under the use is related to this section where it talks about accessory structures?
I mean, just just to be clear of where I'm from, I I'm actually kind of ambivalent at this point about going one way or the other, I just think it's more complicated than what we have here. And that's where I landed on it last year, because I do think we're gonna have to address the accessory use issue. Because it is defined, and I do think it's a limitation, for better or for worse, it's it's there. It's in the bylaws, so we're gonna have to address it if we're gonna tackle this problem.
Yes, yeah, it's more than just changing it in one spot.
Um considering it sounds like um like, yes, it brings up a host of other things, which is, I I, yeah, I remember us leaving off with it that way. Is there any simple language we can add which may not address everything that we're talking about, but just sort of help?
But I think that's what we tried to do last year and came, came to the same place.
I feel like C, C just doesn't make any sense to me, I mean what is the difference between B and C, really?
Well, I think, I think the difference, Peter, is that when it says subject to the dimensional requirements in section two thirty-five eighteen, they're referring to B. Because that's the only place there were dimensional requirements.
Yeah, that's just define, that's defining storage structure, yeah.
Okay, so C is defining B.
So we should really have it be like a subset, not written out as a separate item, I think, to Peter's point.
Yeah, I I personally, I think this needs a lot more work and maybe like a a little subcommittee working on it and looking at each of the parts and how they fit in the whole.
Is it, is it, is it that way to deal with this is to change accessory use?
It's, and then, well, the reason I asked that original question was now, if you go to C and I don't know if it's if it's logical or not to everyone, but I mean, like, you know, why is the building an accessory use in the first place? It's an accessory structure which is what we're talking about here in two thirty-five eighteen, it's not an accessory use, a use would be what you do with the building. And that would be governed by accessory uses, but we're talking about stretch structures here. So, you know, the structure could be, maybe it would be the, you know, it could have been the whatever, the commercial kitchen, and then it turned into the workshop. And it all happened, you know, took place in this detached garage outbuilding that that was on a lot, I mean, I just don't see why, I don't know if that use I don't know if use fits here in C.
Well, it's just, I think what it's just saying is if it's not an accessory use, if it doesn't comply with it, then it's not allowed. That's the way I interpret it anyway. But I agree, it it leaves something to be, I'm not saying there's not an issue here. Um I just, I'm not sure that we're we're there.
Right now without it all in front of us, right, okay, now you're you're probably right.
I mean, I think, I I I think that the way that that is draft, the way that that is written in C because it relates to accessory uses, I think that the intent there is actually to create a limitation on the size, which is what Deb concerned. I think that B kind of gets more um to the, you know, where it's located, but C certainly gets to the size. And it may be inadequate, uh I'm not saying that, you know, I again, I'm kind of ambivalent on that point, I just think if we're gonna attack. Again, I'm kind of ambivalent on that point, I just think if we're gonna attack, if we're gonna attack this, we've got to attack accessory use, the definition as well.
Yeah, that that may be.
What do you understand by accessory use? It's not clear to me what that is.
No. And to to even make matters worse, in B we have. A resident, we have, since now we have a residential storage structure and a detached residential garage. And you know, is the difference just a garage door?
Something there, I was taking notes, the garage door.
On B, is the difference between a residential storage structure and a detached residential garage? The the existence of a garage door? Is that, is that why one has a different side lot line than the other?
Yeah, I don't know.
So if it has a garage door. So if you had a barn doors, they wouldn't be considered garage doors.
What's the definition of a storage structure? I mean, a garage is a subset of a storage structure because it's storing cars.
Yeah, I think it, I think it is really complicated and and I have read like a number of different town um. Uh town bylaws and it it does seem like different towns approach it. Uh the wording somewhat different and some are definitely very specific about like. Uh like what you can store and quantities of what you can store and like how those apply to like. Lot coverage and sizes and then other towns um. Maybe address it more minimally, but I think they're all probably a little bit more clear than what we have or at least. It's that doesn't seem like it's a hundred percent clear to everyone who's who's um. Potentially involved in this, you know, whether it's the inspectional services or owner homeowners um. So I I just think it's something that we need.
What about this Deb, what if we, what if we had a a size restriction or added a size restriction restriction to. Or a residential storage structure? I mean, because that's clearly different than a garage, I mean, I I I do believe that.
And even if we didn't come up with a number, but we just said that it was subject to. Our review, I think at least would give us a chance to evaluate it cuz like you said, there's probably. Or somebody said there was, there's probably contexts where it's um. It 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 fits and it's more acceptable and then other instances where it really isn't, so. I think that would actually be a reasonable solution to at least have something. A little bit more specific than what we have and then we could spend the next, we're kind of looking about at whether or not anything. If we have other moving parts that we need to address or if we should add or change anything. I think that would, I like that idea.
But then does that mean that we're gonna say that any, any? Detached storage structure is gonna, is a special permit?
Or how about if it's? Just over a certain size, which I don't know um.
So over the ten percent that we're already referencing in the other section. Over ten percent of the. First few of principal structure. Even though we're saying fifty percent here, so it's yeah, I don't know.
Well, that's fifty percent of the first floor, it the accessory use definition is ten percent of the total of the total use of the lot.
Which, yeah, which is.
Okay, right, yeah, so it could be, could be way bigger.
Yeah, could be.
You could, you can put both and say, well, 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 it's smaller.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you know, the funny thing is that me and my, my friend had a house on Sheridan Street that he sold, but. It was a pretty big house and then it was an old lot, you know, it's from like eighteen hundred, so it had a, had a really big garage and. It actually made, it sort of like looked like it fit in there, but you know how some of those lots are so narrow and long? That you would think, well, I wouldn't want that garage right next to my property, even though it actually looked, it just looked like it fit in. In that context where where it was in the yard, it was just funny the way that. It might not be something that you would want from the builder next to you, your lot, but when you see how it looked, you know, as an old building, it looked. Kind of made sense, it was just, it was a, but. Right, so maybe, yeah, so can you just attach D to the way Bob said? We'll have.
You can say uh the size of the building should be uh as accessory use. Or fifty percent of the footage of the building, whatever is smaller.
We could take another approach um to it.
If not, needs to have to review.
Like what we were saying about the second entrance, I think Greg mentioned this at some point when we were talking about this last time. But that like most of the time, these um accessory buildings, storage or garages are. Um behind the house. They're not usually forward of the house, but we don't have any language that prohibits it from being forward of the principal structure. So even if like that same language we just said for the eh the door on the in-law. As long as the accessory structure or uh garage. Was appeared in appearance um. Was subordinate to the principal structure. And is that too subjective? Cuz like you, like that example you just gave Peter, like, yeah, maybe that footprint's pretty big, but because it's behind the main house. Um or it's set back a certain way, maybe it's really not that offensive, but if it was the first thing you saw. It was right at the setback line in the house was what was set back, it would appear that it was the principal structure.
Yeah, you're right, and also, um I guess, I just had asked Stephanie, you know, you know, who decides what? This is a front yard and side yard on a corner lot and it's. As it is right now.
Right, and generally it's determined, and basically it is determined to be that there are two front yards unless the building. Inspector decides otherwise.
I just, I'm just pointing out how complicated it can get when you have just different situations that you're not even, you know, not considering are, we haven't considered yet.
Yep.
So depending on if it's the front or the side, then it's, you know, either subordinated or not, and it has to be a different setback.
So, Deb, you, do you agree that B can cover your D as well with the proper language?
So I'm sorry, did you just say, did, did that B can be covered by?
B can, B, if we change it, okay, limiting the size of the building. And your comment about the appearance, B.
Yeah, I think so, I think as long as it just. Like if we don't want to come up with a number, I think as long as it was. Subordinate in appearance to the principal structure, or I don't even know if we, like, there's probably, maybe there is an instance where. Having one of these buildings forward of the main. House is appropriate, so I don't know if it's too limiting to say it has to be. You know, uh. Either uh at the same setback or or behind, so that's why I'm saying maybe it's just keeps it a little bit more.
If you're going to say that the the structure should be subordinate in appearance and size. To the main use or the main building.
That, yeah, that. That works for me.
And and if not, it would need a, to to have a special permit.
Yeah, that would work for me. I mean, I think that's the main intent, where the whole point is just that. I think there were a few instances that maybe the accessory structures that were being built. Were somewhat um dominant to the or not in character with. Uh in a residential district, but um there was, there's questions about, yeah. The use and the structure and we don't really, you know, it does the size limitation applied. Does the building inspector agree with that, like, so I think something to help kind of. Um make our intent more clear, cuz I think, I think that is our. I think that's probably always been the intent of an accessory structure, right, that it's not the principal structure.
I- is it, isn't that genetic to all accessory structures?
Yes, I would think so.
So I I it's not in front of me what, how this accessory structure start, but. Probably there's a scope or something at the beginning, that's going to add that all accessory structure. Should be subordinate, subordinate in appearance and size to the main structure of the lot.
Or or more um subject to planning board approval.
Or subject to a special permit, yeah.
I mean, I would be okay with that, uh if that's acceptable to the board and. I don't know if that means if we do that, if we just eliminate what you have in yellow.
Um it might be okay, but this, is that referring to any attached garage or? So any accessory structures, so?
Any accessory structure should be subordinate in size and appearance to. The main you, the main building of the lot, but we submitted to.
Alright, okay, so, you know, so then who who decide, who kind of decides what triggers? The planning board review, the building inspector?
Yeah, well, I would, I would think if the square footage of the accessory structure. Is larger than the. Principal use.
Okay, alright, so the footprint, well, yeah.
Yeah, or if it's forward of the building, I would think that wouldn't also be. Subordinate to the principal use. But yes, I mean, how one hundred percent clear this is to the building inspector, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I think that at least it would be.
So can I kind of just capture what what this general language is? So any accessory structure should be subordinate.
In in size and appearance.
To the principal structure.
The principal structure. Or be, or be submitted uh approved.
Yeah, that's I. That is subjective and it will be up to the building inspector to make that determination.
Bob, as a um attorney, do you um? Think that that. That our intent is more clear that way or no, it would, I think, I. Your original suggestion was. I already forgot your exact words.
I mean, I I think it could be, it it's just, you know, it's, it's kind of already there. Because if we're looking at certain buildings and that's basically. You're looking at it, and and so it says tool sheds, garden sheds, storage sheds, garages, or other like buildings. That to me is your accessory structures, shall be allowed as accessory uses, and then if you go back to. Accessory uses, the language that we just identified is already there. It's a use incidental and subordinate to the principal use of a structure or lot. Or use, not the principal use, which is located on the same lot as the principal structure. So I think it's fine, I mean, I think it's kind of already there more or less, that's why I. I remember thinking this last year that, you know, when it was the building inspector had had. Said something different than what our, like, initial gut reaction was. Well, that can't be possible and I and I don't think it's possible. Eh the way it's written now, and that's just the the, you know, look, I'm only one person, so if we need to. Clarify, I don't, I don't particularly care if we've got stuff that's repetitive, I mean, that doesn't bother me at all. As long as it does improve and and make it a little bit more clear, but um. I don't know, I I, I just think, to me, I. I think this is a little bit more complicated than we're letting on and I I just don't think one or two. Meetings on this um is enough time to sort it out. And I know Deb, you've been mentioning this for a while and sure for you, it doesn't feel like it's been one or two meetings. Certainly, um I just don't feel as confident as I'd like to about the solution.
Yeah, I don't think that um like adding that one sentence will like solve all of the potential issues, cuz I do think it's a little bit. More complex and it probably um. I think we probably would need to just set aside time and, you know, during, on our agenda that where we talk about how much. Regulation or or clarity we want to have or add and yeah, it might be a few different sections of rewriting it. Um but I think like even if you do use what you just said, the accessory use, if that's. If everyone agreed, if everyone that read this agreed that those were uh clearly linked and that was what. Does set some limits on there. Um it it still doesn't um. I don't, so you, are you saying like, so in that example of like the forty thousand square foot lot, if you did a four thousand. Square foot building, whatever that building, accessory building is, if that was right. Uh at the front setback and the house was set back behind it. It would be the first thing that you would see, even that was an accessory structure and a four thousand square foot. One story structure is pretty big, like that's a pretty big. Like I said, most people's houses are say four thousand square foot total, which means the footprint is two thousand square feet, so figure. A fairly large, single family hu- home that would be the fir-, you know, right at the uh property line. Forward of the main house, are you saying that you think that the accessory use as we currently have it that says? Um. Where does it say that it should be not subordinate, but I thought you said?
Does say support.
Yeah, where, I'm looking at it right now, where is it?
It's the um, it's the first sentence.
Oh, any use incidental and subordinate, so, but again, it talks about. So are you saying that language would cover it and you don't think that um? That would just be considered that the use of the building? Is subordinate to the main use of the principal structure, which is a house?
I I'm just, I'm just saying that it's already there, so. You you asked me if I thought the language that you had proposed that's written and read there, that Stephanie added, is gonna solve. The problem or what my thought was, and I, my answer to you is no, because it's already there. And so if there remains ambiguity about it, I think we've got to do something different.
What if? In second uh in two thirty five eighteen C? If we just reference those additional dimensional requirements that Bob has been referring to.
Well, the one thing I like about the language that um almost said that. Stephanie just typed in red is just that it makes it clear that the structure itself should be subordinate. Whereas I think some people like.
So that, that means it could be one foot. Square difference in the footprint than the house and it would still be subordinate.
Okay, so you could say somewhere around C, you could say, any accessory structure should be subordinate. Uh shall be subordinate in size and appearance to the principal structure. And subject to the dimensional requirements in two thirty five dash eighteen and. The principle and the accessory use that that Bob has referenced. So.
Then the definition of accessory use, right?
Yep, so we'll directly reference that definition.
Makes it a little bit clearer, Lisa, that would make my interpretation clearer.
Yes, well, it would, it would, it would link to that which which further provides like that. I think the thing is that that's not the spot for a dimensional requirement, even though that's where it is, Bob, now I mean.
No, I I hear you, I I I really do, and then the fact that it references dimensional requirements right there. And it doesn't really reference the definite, no, I get, I do get it, I am. Maybe this will help clarify it a little bit.
Yeah, or we can move the, or we can move the dimensional requirement from. The definitions to this section right here.
True too, yeah.
Which is actually a better structural way to handle it, because typically, if you look through the definitions, I don't I recall it, I don't think they have. They don't, most definitions don't have, you know. Dimensional requirements. At some probably do just as like a a way that people address the, you know, to change the code.
Who who can give the Stephanie a word in there?
So right, so if you were thinking, I want to build an accessory structure, I wanna know what rules I need to follow, you would. You you would think you would just go here to to see most of the rules, and then maybe. Maybe you'd have a few other requirements that you'd have to follow these that references to. I really think you can just put that Stephanie's red line part. In C. And then also just reference. The definitions that Bob has pointed to. It's not a perfect way to handle it, but it would accomplish. Something that we've been talking about and make it a little more clear. But I don't know if that's even.
Should we?
Um yeah, I'm fine with that solution, I yeah, so so and then we'll reference accessory use. After two thirty five dash eighteen.
So.
That does does that is that, does that make sense to you, like, is that closer to what you're intending?
Yeah, I mean, I think I think helping to um link all of those things together makes it a little bit more clear, and I think. Again, like um. I think stating it out the way that Stephanie had written, I can't read it right now, but um that it makes. That accessory use and accessory structure a little bit more clear as opposed to just separate. Separate entities that don't have anything to do with one another, or can be interpreted that way if they wanted to, helps.
The real problem is that we have, yeah, when we have dimensional requirements in the definitions. We have it in the in the in the appendix, and we have it here, so it's like it's all over the place, and that's that's why it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, but eh on on these sentences, we we are not mentioning accessory use, we need to add.
Uh we have it mentioned about the sentence above that.
Well, and you were you were saying Stephanie should add on and say um and uh. In.
Yeah.
According with uh use, I I don't know, I have. I guess I have a page number, but yeah, what is this in the um definitions section of the?
It's in the definitions section under use. And and what is the reference to that exactly that we would add here?
Subject to the dimensional requirements in section two thirty five dash eighteen and those set forth. In the definition of capital A accessory, capital U use.
So just note right after two thirty five eighteen, Stephanie's a bolded.
And, okay, so it oh right here. Okay, so this is a new, okay. Anyway, we meant that was not what I meant to do, this was supposed to be a call out. Yeah, that's it.
Yep, there you go.
And as. That fourth. And. Dash six oh.
There you go.
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
And then we were just. Uh are we striking D for that for now, or are we?
Yeah, I. Is it right? Okay.
Doesn't really.
And are you guys okay with um keeping any one side on there, cuz like I guess my intent there was.
How many sites would a? Garage actually be attached to, I I tried to visualize that.
Well, you could have. Attached to both sides.
Oh, you mean in the middle somehow?
Does it it does it really matter, because you're not restricting. Now that I read it, I I thought you were trying to restrict, like you can only. Have a carport attached to one side of a building. I mean, I of a dwelling.
I think you're just saying attached to a dwelling.
I think I was.
Are you trying to say that they shouldn't have a garage on either side of the? Attached to either side, so have two garages, one attached to the north side, one to the south side as an example?
Yes, yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
That's not really what that says, though.
I think you would make a new sentence after that that says. A primary re- a primary structure shall only have one attached garage.
And 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 why, why would that be?
Oh, why would we say that, cuz that's what Deb was, I think, was trying to accomplish.
Right, so I'm but I'm questioning, why would you, why would you want to limit that?
Uh I think because like the garage, it should still be it or a storage. Building that's attached should still be except um accessory to the primary. Use and if you have. In most instances, most people don't have to have.
I mean, what if. What if someone wanted it to, oh, sorry, go ahead, Chris, because you may be saying what I'm gonna say.
What if you were constrained and you wanted a two or three car garage could only fit? That if it was broken up where one cars on one side and two cars around the other side.
I think that would be okay, except for that, like, so like some towns actually say. Some some towns actually just say that, you know, you can't have six vehicles for one. Uh single family home, or you know, there's some sort of limit, so I guess. You know, uh but whatever.
I'm I'm curious if that would hold up in a court of law, that you could only have so many vehicles. On your property, if you used all of them, if they weren't being, you know, they weren't junked or unregistered.
What if you're like a car collector or something?
Right.
Maybe maybe the second car garage is for the in lots and beyond a lot.
Um I'm okay with um considering, I think we made a lot of progress with the other language, I'm fine if we just strike out the one, but I will say, and I can. If we do end up doing, which maybe it's a good idea to like, yes, have a little subcommittee or whatever. I can spend more time on um. You know, trying to be more thorough about this if we ever wanna edit this for the future. But I can tell you for certain that there are a number of towns that specifically limit. The amount of registered vehicles that one can have on a single family home. So I I don't know if there those towns are illegally. Have illegal zoning bylaws, but they're definitely are. There is language in place that I found for sure, like in not in just one town, like in multiple towns, so I guess that's just sort of. Cuz I think the main thing is like, yeah, most it's we're talking about a single family home or residential. Uh you know, a sing- one or two family home um dwelling that's considered residential. And um. Vehicles in excess of a certain number are not. What one would expect in a residential district, so I'm not really sure what all of the other towns bylaws and tents are, but. I guess, yes, I was just thinking that, you know.
I I can see the problem, I've seen houses with five or six cars parked outside. Uh so it's not a garage issue, because they would never build enough garage space to park all those cars. But it doesn't look right, it doesn't look great.
Yeah, so but we can address that at another time, um. You know, cuz I so a lot of those towns address. You know, same thing, like you can't have a camper, a boat. And also six cars and three unregistered and, you know, six registered. So but I know we don't address any of those things, and maybe we don't want to, but.
Is that like a kind of just a regular ordinance or is it a zoning bylaw?
In zoning. I think I think one of the towns I can specifically remember that it addresses is in Braintree. But yeah, I don't know if anyone's challenged them on it, so, but I did read, but there are definitely restrictions in certain towns about like. The kinds of vehicles, the sizes of the vehicles, how many vehicles, um but yeah.
And I ask the questions, because those are questions that, you know, people will ask, they'll.
Yeah, I actually have them saved on my computer too, so like if we needed, I mean, it doesn't, I don't think what we're proposing. Is is that right now, but like I I that's what I'm saying, if we wanna do like a subcommittee or whatever, like I have. Research some other towns, kind of like you were doing for trying to find the language for self-storage, like I tried to see like, well, what. Other communities are similar to Easton, and what do they say about accessory? Buildings and accessory uses and so forth, and so. And then there is a range, some say not a lot like we do, and some say some are very specific, but yeah. They definitely do restrict, some towns definitely do restrict it. But anyway, that's enough of that, sorry to, it's such a, it's such an open. I know, yeah, so continuation of our conversation we had. Last year, if it was a simple topic to address, I'm sure we would have already addressed it and finished, so. Thank you for your input, everybody.
Thank you, now I'm reading the uh Braintree uh zoning.
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks a lot, I'm gonna read that on it.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it's true. Pretty, it's pretty. Complex there.
Is that the last one we had on on there?
Yes, yes, that is it.
Do you have anything else to talk about?
I did not have time to read the minutes, so I don't know if we're doing that or not.
Well, you know.
Yes, and I think I I apologize that we got them out late, um it was a quick turnaround, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're really good at the minutes, so I'll just, you know, we can just we'll do that at the next meeting, that's okay, I think, I mean. We're usually aware of it, let's run us look at it right now and we can.
Do we need to vote on this um amendments?
Yeah, sure, if you think they're like, okay, I I just I forgot to look at them before the meeting after they were getting emailed.
Okay, so the two, the last two, the board needs to vote to hold a hearing on.
Oh, that's true.
So if that if you can make that vote first, we won't forget that.
Okay, good idea, thank you.
Motion to vote to include the solar amendment in the. Structure amendment as revised in the meeting.
Uh as for a hearing? Because you have, these were a part, because these were added after the hearing notice went out. So you actually have to, we actually have to schedule a hearing for these two.
And to add these to our hearing.
Second, Stetson.
Right, discussion. Uh in favor, DeShane, I.
Stetson, I.
Thank you, Stephanie, for reminding us to vote on it.
I'll actually make a motion as well to approve the meeting minutes.
Stetson, second.
Question, uh all in favor, DeShane, I.
Anderson, I.
And I just have.
I, sorry, sorry.
That's an eye.
Is it ever one?
Yep.
Okay.
And I just have one other question, um did the board want to vote? To accept any of the amendments at this point, or do you want to wait until you see the revised version?
Oh, I see, um.
I'd like to see the revised version.
Yeah. Yeah, is that okay, just cuz we especially we made so many of these changes here to, you know, say like right there, the principal uses for the bed and breakfast. I don't know if Ray had other ideas on that, or so maybe we can just.
Yeah.
That way we're just all, if we're going to send him to the town meeting to talk about it, we'll give him a chance to to chime in.
Okay, that's fine.
I think we could have done that for a few of them, but at this point, we can, we should be able to move right through quickly if we need to on most of them.
Okay.
I have one comment, Mr. Chair. The next meeting of the planning board is the public hearing for the first set of zoning amendments.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Is it not the next meeting?
March twenty first.
I said that, yeah, we talked about that earlier, right, so.
That's fine, right?
Is that right, Stephanie, I mean?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah, okay, yes, it is.
Okay.
Right.
If anything else, or she'll be adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, DeShane?
Anderson, I.
Stetson, I. Have a nice night.